We'll call the city commission meeting to order. The first item is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business?
Yes, Mr. Johnson, we'd like to take off item 4F, and that will be reported on at the next city commission meeting.
Item 4F, the financial report?
Financial report, correct.
Okay.
Mr. President, I would like to request you remove two other items from this evening's agenda. The 5:15 timetable item on the middle school property, just the first item on there, the future land use map amendment. We'd request that you would remove that from the agenda. We will bring that back at a future meeting. And then item 7A, there's a salt brine and cold storage facility, bid award, would request that you would remove that from this agenda as well.
Okay. Are there any other changes? Any additions? All right. Would there be a motion to approve the order of business with those three changes?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Close say nay. The motion carries. Before we move to the consent agenda, I just, I want to make a comment regarding some of our process and procedure. Under reports tonight, the city administrator is going to give a report on an ordinance that would address taxi cab regulations. And I understand there may be some people here this evening that want to speak to that, and that's fine. We would be doing that at the very end of the meeting. There would be no action taken tonight on any taxi cab regulations. About all we're going to decide is whether or not we want to place that on a future meeting agenda. And if we do, then you would have, I'm anticipating, three opportunities to speak to that issue. The first opportunity would be at the first reading. This would be a pretty significant change, so there's likely to be at least one public hearing. That would be a second meeting. And if it passes the first reading and there is a public hearing, then a third meeting would be held where we would have the second reading, and there would also be opportunity for public comment. And that's kind of the process we go through with all ordinances. So when we, when he speaks about this, there won't be public comment on that time, but there's always public comment available. At the end of the meeting, you can comment on anything, and if you want to comment on the taxi issue, you're certainly welcome to, but it'll be at the end. With that, we go to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you'd like to discuss? Not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote then. Mr. Jackson, Mr. Decker, Mr. Altman, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. So we'll go down to the non-timetable agenda. And the first item we have there is an ordinance regarding tobacco sales. This is the second reading of this ordinance. And Mr. Coling, is there anything you'd like to say about this?
Mr. President, this proposed ordinance is unchanged from first reading. As you recall, current ordinance makes it a, an offense to have, for a minor to sell tobacco products. This ordinance, if it is adopted by the commission, would remove that prohibition of minors from selling tobacco products. Minors would still be prohibited from possessing, using, or distributing tobacco products in any form. City staff do not recommend passage of this ordinance. We do think there would be some problems with enforcement, particularly as it pertains to all of our licensed establishments selling tobacco and making sure that those don't fall into the hands of minors. Other than that, though, I, the commission does have it within its discretion to pass the ordinance and be available for any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Are there any comments, questions for Mr. Coling? Hearing none, then, at this time, we'll declare a public hearing open regarding this proposed ordinance. Anyone that wishes to speak to it may come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody wish to comment on ordinance 1574? There's no one that wishes to comment, we'll declare this public hearing closed. And any comments by city commissioners? All right. Then would there be a motion regarding second reading and final passage in ordinance 1574?
I make the motion of ordinance 1574.
For approval?
For approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
No.
Mr. Jackson.
No.
Chair votes no, so the motion fails, and second reading and final passage fails. We'll move on to item B. This is a Renaissance Zone request, and Planning Director Millstone will introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commission members. This is a request for a Renaissance Zone project and, at 41 East Valard Street. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval. I'm available for any questions on that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Millstone. Any, any comments or questions regarding this? This is the old Ivanhoe building?
That's correct, Mr. President.
Can you tell us a little bit about what's going to be done there?
Absolutely. It's a 30,000 square foot renovation. The cost of the renovation is more than 50 percent of the assessed value of the building, and they're asking for real estate tax abatement and income tax abatement for a period over five years. If you want to get more in depth, Mr. Josephson is here. He's a project manager on this project.
Actually, Mr. President, I was going to, Steve Josephson, City County Planner, they have a representative here today who's prepared to discuss what their plans are.
Oh, great.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. I am Jamie Arnold, and I am part of Melby Law Office, and we represent the owner of the building, Samira Surani. Sam purchased the building in February. Like you mentioned, it is the old Ivanhoe building. As of right now, there are no plans that are set in stone, but they're working with contractor to finalize plans as the process goes along. She intends to renovate the building to pretty much bring it back to its original use as a hotel and restaurant with possible retail, and there is check cashing and e-cigarette business in, on the main floor already. Extensive work does need to be done throughout the building, nearly to the extent of gutting the building down to the four exterior walls. The fourth through sixth floors have had very little done to them in the 20-some years since it was a hotel, but the hotel rooms are not really the, of modern comfort, they're very outdated. So again, they pretty much need to be gutted. The second and third floors need to be converted back from the gym that they were for the taekwondo. And then the first floor is right now office space, and so again, that will be, need to be converted to retail restaurant space. There's no timeline set in stone, I suppose, with any, or with a lot of construction projects, but I understand that once the Renaissance project is approved and the existing, the final existing tenants are out of the building, the construction will begin at full force. Sam has visited with numerous people in Dickinson to try to get a feel for what the community needs and wants, and has had very positive input on this project. And she's been working extensively to get the project up and running, and she's confident that it meets the goals of the Renaissance Zone and looks forward to approval. If anybody has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions regarding the project?
If I may, just wanted to add, they're talking about estimated amount of $2.2 million in renovations, which is well over, you know, well over half the assessed value of the property, the assessed value of the property. So it's going to be an extensive renovation, the roof, the elevator, and so on. It's going to be extensive renovation, and certainly, we're looking forward to it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jackson.
I have no question from Ms. Arnold, but maybe Mr. Josephson or someone else, there is property tax forgiveness on a project like this, correct?
Commissioner Jackson, what it does is that, at the moment that it's, that the project is finished, and they have five years to get the project done, it will actually freeze, freeze their property tax rate for five, if you choose to go five years for up to five years.
Okay.
So whatever that assessed value at that time is, or the, or before the building is finished.
Okay, and then that's really what I was getting at, is what triggers that property tax benefit? And I think you just answered that.
Okay. But it will be assessed not on the basis of the improvements, but what was there prior.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess if you're in favor of this, the motion would be to approve the Renaissance application. And if you're not in favor, it's just the opposite.
I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. We'll move on to item C, which has to do with the Public Safety Center, and Mr. Kessel will introduce this item.
Thank you, President Johnson, and Commission. Before you is a change order for the Public Safety Center relating to IT cabling. This is before you because it exceeds the amount that you've given authority to myself as city staff to change a, or to authorize a change order. All of these items were in the original bid for the Public Safety Center. They are under owner-provided items. The idea there is, of course, if they're easily attainable, we don't have to engage the architect to put together the package or the CM, and then charge a, an admin fee on top of whatever bids we can get. So as an owner-provided item, we have to purchase these separate from the contract with J.E. Dunn. We've done so, or providing you at least with the bid to do so. It is in excess of what we budgeted for. We did use, the budget that I'm referring to was the one we did when it was put out to bid originally. So about a year ago is when we put these numbers together. We either underestimated the amount of that expense, or those expenses exceeded the inflationary mark that we expected, or a little bit of both. So these items are absolutely necessary to run the facility, and it is our recommendation that you would award the bid to Data Technologies in the amount of $110,232. I will say that the contingency amount that we have established for this structure, this falls well within the amount of contingency, so it will not have an effect on the total budget for the project itself. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Kessel, what was the total before, what was the budget?
We were estimating about $60,000 to $65,000.
Did you get more than one bid?
Sorry, President Johnson, yes, we did receive more than one bid on that.
Was this the low bidder?
This is the low bidder, yes.
Not, is there a motion regarding this item?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. We'll go to item D, and this is a Cook Meadow Hills addition development agreement addendum, and Mr. Coling will introduce this item.
Mr. President, Commissioners, this is an addendum to a development agreement for the Cook Meadow Hills Fifth Edition. This addition is located just off of State Avenue North, between 40th Street and just north of our Public Safety Center. This property was platted last year. At that time, when we entered into a development agreement with the developer, we put into that development agreement a requirement that they would not develop or sell any more than 29 dwelling units until the construction of State Avenue was completed. We have received a request from the developer to increase that number from 29 to 80 additional 51 dwelling units. Now, State Avenue has been bid and is under construction. We feel fairly confident that that road will be completed before any of these properties are occupied, and we have written that into the development agreement that before building permits would be issued within the development, all of the infrastructure and roads would be completed, and before any certificate of occupancy would be issued, the State Avenue Road construction project would be completed. So we don't believe that any occupied structure, or any structure up there would be occupied prior to a full access and development of that subdivision. City staff do recommend approval of the addendum. Be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Any questions or comments for him? Not, is there a motion regarding this item?
I'll move, we approve the addendum for Meadow Hills Fifth.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Takes us to item E. This is amendment to a 457 plan, and Mr. Coling will tell us what the 457 plan is and introduce the item.
Thank you, Mr. President. The 457 plan is the defined contribution retirement plan that the city operates. Under this plan, the city contributes 5 percent of an employee's salary to the defined contribution plan, and the employee contributes 5 percent to the plan. This is the sole retirement plan for any employees joining the city after about 2006. This amendment to the plan would allow the city to make an additional contribution to the defined contribution plan for certain employees. This would allow contributions in excess of the 5 percent that is now mandated by the plan. This amendment, if you do approve it, it is required under the employment agreement for the city administrator, the most recent version of that, as the city administrator did defer a portion of salary to the 457 plan. This has been presented and drafted by a Retirement Plan Council, and as city staff and Retirement Plan Council do recommend approval of the plan. I'd be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Are there any comments, questions for him? Not, would there be a motion regarding this item?
Mr. President, move to approve the amendment to 457 plan?
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item F, we withdrew, so item G has to do with a tobacco license, and Mr. Kessel will introduce this item.
Thank you, President Johnson, and Commission. We have a request by Big Sky Barbers that is made up of Paul and Matthew Ellercamp to issue a tobacco license. Their pitch, or their business will be located at 448 21st Street West. It is a brand-new business to our community. They do have a proper state license to sell tobacco products. They've met all local conditions to sell tobacco products as are required by this license. It is their stated intent to simply sell cigars, but by issuing them this license, they will have the option to sell any and all tobacco products that are legal by virtue of issuing them the license. It is our recommendation as city staff that you issue the license as requested.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any comments or questions by commissioners? Hearing none, is there a motion regarding this item?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
We have the motion to approve and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item H, city attorney job description, Mr. Kessel.
Thank you, President Johnson. As you are acutely aware, Mr. Coling is leaving our employ. He does so as a contracted employee. We are actively seeking a new city attorney to be in-house counsel, and we would like to have the option of having this position be a civil service employee. In order to do so, we have had the Civil Service Commission review the city attorney job description, as has been attached, and the recommendation from the Civil Service Commission is to approve this document. It does classify the city attorney's position as a Level 6, which is one step, or one grade below the city administrator. It is an exempt position, and we would, I would also concur with the Civil Service Commission's recommendation to approve.
Mr. Kessel, why, why the change?
President Johnson, it is not a, the change has not been made, it simply provides us the option to make that change. This position may end up being a contracted position as it is today. So I can't say that there is a change, it just makes it available to us.
Why the option?
Just in case that the attorney that we would recommend be hired prefers the civil service option.
Well, I have the same question, but I'm wondering what we prefer.
Well, certainly, as a city commission, if you would prefer to maintain that as a contracted position, you would, you would be able to do so.
By "we," I meant you too. No, it just seems like it has worked well, the way we've been doing it, and we have a couple of other positions as well.
What's the advantage, disadvantage?
You know, actually, I had conversations with Attorney Coling about this. His preference, obviously, is to be contracted, that's what he is today. I'm anticipating that whomever we would choose to bring forth would also want a contract. The, the advantage of a contracted position is, obviously, you have a term, you have a, I'll call it guaranteed employment unless, unless there is something untoward that would happen during that term. So you have certain guarantees that the contract brings you. Civil service, it basically changes, the contract is approved by the city commission, civil service employee answers to the city administrator, so there would be less direct involvement by the city commission in a civil service employee than there would be by a contracted employee. It's the only thing I can think of in terms of a difference.
About eligibility for the retirement program, that doesn't matter either way.
It gives you more flexibility on the contract side to deviate. Almost all of the contracted benefits that are available to Mr. Coling and myself as the other contracted employee are almost identical to what is offered to civil service employees. There are some differences, but very, very few.
Correct me if I'm wrong here, but wouldn't another difference be that a contracted employee is really more an at-will employee, that if you're a civil service employee, in a sense, you have the added protection of the civil service process? But if, with a contracted employee, if the commission decides that your services are no longer needed, as long as we conform to the process that's outlined in the contract, we can go down that route a little easier than if you were a civil service employee.
President Johnson, I believe that to be accurate as well, yeah.
I was asking Mr. Coling.
Well, I've learned a city attorney, I always agree with city administrators, so.
Right.
So I agree with Mr. Kessel. That would be an additional protection. I think when, at present, the only employees that the city has that are non-civil service employees are the city administrator and the city attorney. And I think in certain circumstances, it may work well in both environments, both to be a civil service employee and a non-civil service employee. I think if this job description change is approved, I think it would provide the city administrator and you as a commission the flexibility to go through either our hiring process, either to be a civil service employee, if you deem that to, to be the best way to go, or to be a contract employee, if you would like to, to pursue a city attorney that way. It's some additional flexibility, and depending on who the applicant is, or who your intended hirer is, they may have different preferences as to whether they would prefer to be a civil service employee or a non-civil service.
I would say one of the other differences is in the actual process of hiring. For a contracted employee, we have more recruitment capabilities than we do for a civil service employee. We are following the civil service process for this hire, so we, if it's contracted, we would still retain that flexibility, we're simply not using it at this time.
Well, I guess I don't have any objections to approving this. I think at the end of the day, it would, if, if you do have a candidate that you choose to make a job offer to, it's really up to the commission to decide whether that offer would be as a contract employee or a civil service employee. Any else? Would there be a motion regarding this item?
Mr. President, I'd move we approve the job description, as posted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. It's 5:00. We have several timetable agenda items. The first three are rezoning petitions, and we'll have Director Millstone introduce each one of these. So, Mr. Millstone.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commission members. As stated, there are three rezones on the 5:00 PM timetable agenda. The first one is a request for a rezone from agricultural to planned unit development. The site is generally located in the south half, Section 35, Township 140 North, Range 97 West, and is approximately 156 acres. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval, subject to conditions.
This is essentially the exit 56 development?
That is correct, Mr. President.
And, Mr. Coling, this is ordinance 1575?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Well, at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to comment on 1575, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'd hear your comments. Anyone wish to comment on ordinance 1575? Okay, there are no comments? Okay, there are no comments on 1575. Any comments or questions by commissioners? Not, is there a motion regarding first reading of 1575?
Mr. President, I'd move we approve first reading of ordinance 1575.
Now, second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion?
You know, maybe just one comment, Mr. President. If you recall, this area was discussed at length when we did our West Area Plan, the West Dickinson Plan, and we really wanted to stay away from hard industrial on this. So there was a lot of negotiation, I guess I'd call it, Mr. Josephson, Mr. Millstone, and the Roers folks, and came up with the PUD idea and really customizing the land use in this area. So I think it's a good move. It's going to work well out there and still follow what the intent of our West Dickinson Plan was.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Are there any other comments? Not, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries.
Mr. President and commission members, the second item is a request for rezoning from limited industrial to general industrial. The site is generally located in lots 1 and 2 of Block 1 of Berwick Second Subdivision, and Lot 6, Block 2 of Berwick First Subdivision, and the property is roughly 11.2 acres. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Millstone. Again, if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on this proposed ordinance, number 1576, you may do so now. You just come to the podium, state your name, and we'd hear your comments. Anyone wish to comment on 1576? No one wishes to comment on 1576, so we'll declare the public hearing closed, invite any comments by commissioners. There's no comments, is there... Would there be a motion regarding 1576?
Make a motion to approve. Now, second.
We have the motion in the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries.
Mr. President, the third item on the 5:00 PM timetable agenda is a request for rezoning from agricultural to medium-density residential. The site is generally situated in the northwest quarter of Section 16, Township 139 North, Range 96 West, and it's roughly 4.58 acres. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Millstone. Again, then, this is ordinance number 1577. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this ordinance, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, we'd hear your comments. Anyone from the public? There's no one from the public, so invite comments by city commissioners.
Mr. President, move we approve?
Chair, second?
Now, second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Not, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Well, we have five minutes, so, Mr. Kessel, we'll go down to your reports, and you can begin on your legislative update.
Thank you, President Johnson. I don't have much for legislative update, other than to say that they adjourned. Happy day. The, in the discussion that I've had with the Senate Majority Leader, he does not think they'll have to go back, at least until next session. So we're hopeful of that. You know, overall, cities did track three primary pieces of legislation. We tracked, you know, literally hundreds, but three primary pieces. The surge funding bill, which I've reported on, the formula bill, which I've also reported on, and then, of course, the bucket bill, which I also reported on at the last city commission meeting. The surge bill, I think we can label as semi-successful. We were expecting 55 and received 44 million. The formula bill was probably the largest disappointment from local political subdivisions, and we were going in hoping for 60% of the funds be shared with local political subdivisions. We ended up with 30, you know, a far cry from what we hoped for. Obviously, we're all well-aware of the changes in the oil price that affected this legislative session immensely. And then the bucket bill, and I would suggest that that was a success. The bucket bill, at some point, had education funding in it that was eliminated, and what they did do, primarily on the bucket bill, is in the end, there was the last bucket filled, the legislation used to put 75% of those dollars into the SIF Fund, or Strategic Improvement Investment Fund, and 25% into the Legacy Fund. What it does now is 70% of those funds go into the Strategic Investment Fund, and 30% are dedicated to local political subdivisions. So that's a big win for local political subdivisions, and overall, I think we can be happy with the legislation, like I said, with a slight reservation towards the formula bill. I'd certainly ask for any input, if there is any, and if not, I'll continue with my reports until 5:15.
I do have a question, and 5:10 is the next...
Excuse me, 5:10.
But there were at least one bill, if not more than one, that addressed property tax relief, and I don't know how familiar you are with those. In the past, it was addressed by the state taking on more responsibility for K-12 funding and then limiting the school district's ability to tax in terms of number of mills. I think this session, they also took on more of the county's social responsibilities and, in turn, then are reducing the ability of the county to levy mills because they will be providing those services. Can you comment at all on that legislation?
President Johnson, I can confirm that that is accurate, that did take place. I cannot confirm what the millage rate is or what the reductions that are possible, but they did take on a significant portion of what once were county's social services expenses and have transferred those expenses to the state of North Dakota. I could certainly find out more and report back at the next city commission meeting because I don't have any other details than that.
Yeah, whether it would be the next meeting, I would just say, in a, you know, future meeting here, and let's say in the next two, three, or four meetings, I think it would be good to have a more formal report on those changes so the five of us better understand them too when we're discussing issues like that with the public.
Okay.
And I can't remember if they did anything more on the K-12 part, but I do, did remember the county one.
I will put a report together for you.
Okay, thank you. We'll come back to you later, and then it's 5:10. We do have a 5:10 timetable item. This is Northern Place Affordable Housing, and Mr. Millstone will introduce this item also.
Thank you, Mr. President and commission members. This is an additional rezoning petition. This is a request for a rezone from community commercial to limited commercial. The site is situated in Block 3, Lots 1 and 2, Cook Meadow Hills Fourth Subdivision, and is approximately 2.3 acres. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Millstone. This would be ordinance number 1578. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this ordinance, you may do so now. You just come to the podium, state your name, and we'd hear your comments. Anyone from the public? There's no one from the public, so are there any comments by commissioners? Would there be a motion regarding first reading of ordinance 1578?
Make a motion to approve. Now, second.
There's a motion to approve in the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we go ahead and vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. There's a second item there. Well, and that's by Mr. Kohling.
President, I'll take that one if I may. What you have in your packets is a proposed agreement and resolution for a payment in lieu of taxes, or pilot, for the Northern Place Housing Solutions Affordable Housing Development. State law does allow the city to enter into an agreement for payment in lieu of taxes in order to provide, in essence, a subsidy to certain projects for new and expanding businesses. This pilot is consistent with what the city has offered to other developers of affordable housing projects over the past several years. It does cover tax years 2016 to 2035. So it is a 20-year agreement that the city enters into with the developer, with the owner of this project. As I say, it is consistent with what the city has tried to do over the past few years to provide an incentive for affordable housing, and city staff would recommend approval of this resolution and agreement. The developer of this project is in the audience tonight and may wish to address you too and explain his project, if you wish. And I'd be happy to take any questions if you have.
Thank you, Mr. Kohling. Before we invite the developer up, are there any questions for Mr. Kohling? All right, if there's someone that would like to speak to this, you may do so now.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. Alex Burkalter from Housing Solutions, again. Yep, this is just a continuation of the introduction of this project that we started back in January. A quick update, we were successful in the housing tax credits. We found about that in March, and thus, we moved the process along for the rezoning and the pilot agreement. The project is in its design phase. I hope to get a 50% set this Friday, and we're looking to turn in for building permits first of June, is our current plan. And with another mild winter, we'll be happy campers. I stand for any questions you may have about the project.
So, it's affordable housing, can you tell us how it'll be priced?
Yes, I'm sorry. So this is a 36-unit project designed for families. There are two- and three-bedroom units. The two-bedroom units will range in price from $370 per month to $800 per month, and the three-bedrooms range between 415 and 915. So I think it's conservative to say we're half of market even on our highest-priced units. So the tenants that will occupy these units, they also have an income restriction, so when they initially apply, we go through a detailed process to verify they are below either 30%, that's the lower rent, or 60% of the area median income. For example, a three-person household, the most they could earn would be $39,000 to move into the facility. The building is overseen by not only myself as the owner, but also, we entered into a long-term agreement with the North Dakota Housing Finance Agency in exchange for the credits, so they have annual oversight and ensure our compliance.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Burkalter? All right.
Thank you.
So you have, I think this is Resolution 16-2015?
Mr. President, actually, Resolution 17. On the consent agenda, there was a resolution included there, so this would be 17.
17, thank you, Mr. Kohling. So would there be a motion regarding Resolution 17?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have some 515 items, and the Future Land Use Map Amendment was pulled or deferred for a later meeting, so we have the rezoning petition, and, Mr. Millstone, do you present that?
Yes, I do, Mr. President. Mr. President and commission members, this is my final rezone of the night. This is a request for rezoning from agricultural to public. The site is generally situated in the north half of the northwest quarter of Section 32, Township 140 North, Range 96 West, and is comprised of 30 acres, plus or minus. Generally, this is slightly east of the intersection of 21st Street and 30th Ave. West. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval.
Okay, Mr. Kohling, is this ordinance 1579?
That's correct.
This time, if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding 1579, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. My name is Randy Wall, KLJ Engineering 1463, I am 94 Business Loop, East Dickinson. I don't have any objection at all or anything to say about the rezone, we're in total agreement of it. I'm sorry I walked in a little bit late. I'd like to just ask the city attorney why the flum was pulled from the agenda tonight?
Mr. President and commissioners, it appears we got it late on our agenda, but there was an incorrect legal description included with the Future Land Use Map Amendment. So rather than try to correct that on the fly right before the meeting, we elected to pull that from the agenda, and it will come back at a future meeting, probably in two weeks, to have that Future Land Use Map Amendment brought before the commission.
Okay, great. That's what I thought it was, because we had identified that right before the meeting. So all I wanted to say is just let me know what you need from us. We'd be happy to get it to you, and unless you have any other questions, that's all I have.
For the record, you're in support of 1579?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay.
And I asked for your approval tonight, thank you.
Anybody else wish to comment? Not, then we'll declare the public hearing closed and invite comments by commissioners. There's no comments, is there a motion regarding the first reading of ordinance 1579?
I'll move we approve first reading of 1579.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Item three, there is an annexation, and, Mr. Kohling, will present that.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance provides for the annexation of property located to the east of 30th Avenue West and south of 21st Street West. This area is surrounded nearly on all four sides by city limits. It's probably the closest thing we have to a donut hole in our current city limits, so this will fill in that property located to the south of 21st Street West. This will be the location, what has been identified as the location for the new middle school, so we do anticipate some development, urban development within that area in the very near future. There are three property owners, or three entities that are interested or have ownership interest in this land, the state of North Dakota, the Dickinson Public School District, and the August M. Philippi Land Trust. All of those property owners have petition for annexation, and the city does recommend annexation of this property. This would be ordinance 1580, and city staff recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kohling. At this time, we declare the public hearing open for 1580. If there's anyone that would like to comment regarding this ordinance, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody wish to comment on 1580? There's no one wishes to comment, so we'll declare the public hearing closed. If no one wishes to comment, so we'll declare the public hearing closed and invite comments by commissioners. Is there a motion regarding the first reading of ordinance 1580?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We have a 520 item. It's a special use, well, there's two special use permits, and Mr. Millstone will be introducing these items.
Thank you, Mr. President, commission members. The first request is for a telecommunications tower special use permit for Buell Consulting. The site is located at 3184 South 110th Avenue Southeast. Property is roughly .23 acres. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval, and I know the applicants in the audience, if you have any more questions.
Have there been any changes?
No, sir, Mr. President.
Hello, my name is Jesse Diamond. I represent Buell Consulting on behalf of Verizon Wireless. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Is this the property by the West River Community Center that we're talking about?
No.
No, okay.
Commissioner Steiner, no. This is the one way up north, 110th Avenue Southeast.
Close. Okay, thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, I think you're good to go, then. So this is a resolution, and Mr. Coleen, going in order, and then it's Resolution 18-2015. Is there a motion regarding this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? There's a lot of people here. Is there anybody here that wanted to speak to this resolution? Okay. All right. Well, then, we have the motion and the second. Is there any other discussion? Who moved the motion again?
I didn't.
We'll go ahead and vote, then. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President, commission members, the special request, or the second request is for a daycare special use permit for Tots Landing Child Care. Site is located at 951 22nd Avenue East. Property is about 24 hundredths of an acre. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval, subject to conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Millstone. Is there anyone from the public that's here to, that would like to comment regarding this resolution? All right. Are there any comments or questions by commissioners? Is there a motion regarding Resolution 19?
I'll move we approve 19, 2015.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. I think that takes care of our timetable items. We'll go back to Mr. Kessel's report.
Thank you, President Johnson. The next item is the taxi cab regulations, the one you commented on at the onset of tonight's meeting. We have a draft of the, that revises the existing taxi cab ordinance. It's been penned, and the result of that ordinance, or the results from that revisions came from at least the review of three other North Dakota communities and three, and a meeting with three of our licensed cab operators in town. An additional meeting has been set to potentially revise the ordinance even further, and it is our intention as staff to provide a document for first reading at the next city commission meeting. Attorney Coleen penned that document, and so he can walk you through those details if you desire.
Mr. Coleen?
Thank you, Mr. President. We'd like to acknowledge, too, we did receive some information from the taxi owners, or a couple of the taxi owners, of suggestions that they had for the ordinance, as well as some sample ordinances that they had seen work in other communities. So we did review those and incorporate some of those provisions as well. This ordinance, as it's presented to you, is more or less a thorough and complete rewrite of this section of our code. It appears that the last time this section of our code got a thorough revision was 1958 was the last time it was really looked at. So there is some substantial updating that needed to happen to this ordinance, and I think we recognize this is a first draft of this document, and there will be changes that will be made in the future based on your comments and others that we get in the community. I think that the biggest changes on this ordinance occurs on page seven of the, or page five of the document in front of you. Subsection C has lists of things that would disallow issuance of a license to a potential applicant. And in particular, it would disallow a taxi license to be issued if an applicant is found to have falsified any part of the application or the material submitted with the application, if the applicant doesn't have a valid business location for the taxi cab business. In particular, this ordinance would limit taxi cab businesses to commercial or industrial zoned properties. You would not be able to run a taxi cab business out of a single-family residence or apartment or something like that. Does require a licensee to be a valid North Dakota driver's, or hold a North Dakota driver's license. Applicants that held a license from a different state would not be eligible for a license. We do run into problems on this from time to time with respect to out-of-state licensed drivers. In particular, it's very difficult to get a driving record from another state to determine whether there are any violations of record in another jurisdiction. So we do require that they would be North Dakota licensed drivers. The licensee or the applicant would be required to provide evidence of insurance, particularly commercial insurance with limits of $500,000 per claim, or rather, per incident and $1 million per total of all claims from a company licensed to issue insurance in the state of North Dakota. The applicant would also have to identify moving violations or alcohol violations, or whether they have been convicted of a felony in the past. The applicant and licensee would have to identify whether they have ever been required to register as a sex offender, whether in this jurisdiction or anywhere else. And anyone who is otherwise deemed unfit by the Board of City Commissioners to be a taxi licensee would not be eligible for a license either. We recognize that this does impose some fairly stringent requirements on taxi cab licensees. In part, that is directed by some of our taxi cab license, or taxi cab providers. If you recall, not too long ago, there was a front-page story on the, in the Dickinson Press where we had some of our taxi cab providers request regulation, that they believed that their industry needed more regulation, and we've heard that from some of our taxi cab drivers in the city as well. So this ordinance attempts to impose some of those requirements in order to make sure that we do provide a safe service when people are coming into the community and requesting taxi service. As you will note, the ordinance itself is quite long. I'm happy to go into as much detail as you would like, but that, I think, provides a good overview of the major changes that are made in this ordinance, and I'd be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Coleen or Mr. Kessel, or any feedback regarding what you've read so far?
Mr. President, if I ask a couple of questions. Is there a reason we're going with 21 as the age of the taxi driver?
You know, I think as with anything else in the ordinance, it's at the commission's discretion as to what you think are the best ways to regulate taxi cabs. I know from our experience, you look at the ages of when accident rates tend to come down. It's 21 maybe too low, and maybe somebody that's 25 years old would have a better accident rating than someone at 21. And again, it's at the commission's discretion. It seemed to be a good age, but it's at your discretion as to what you feel is the appropriate.
They're carrying their own personal insurance.
Excuse me. You can't interrupt from the audience like that, please.
But they're carrying their own personal insurance, so it'd be, if they're going to pay more insurance because they're, say, we make it 18, that's on them?
Correct. I think in this ordinance, at least as it is drafted, it does not allow a taxi driver to operate on a personal liability automobile insurance. It'd have to be a commercial policy of insurance.
Right.
And I think in the instance where there's a common carrier providing a service to the public, I think a commercial policy would be appropriate.
So again, it would be on that commercial policy, that person's 18, they incur the higher cost with their insurance.
Yeah, I think that's correct. I think for, as far as the reason why it would be 21, you know, it's a matter of what the likely accident rating is for an 18-year-old driver.
And then I know another thing that's in there is can't operate from a personal residence. And I know we're a small community, but there's such services like Uber and things like that, not that Uber would come here, but a lot of that is based upon that you operate basically out of your own residence. How would this affect something like Uber?
You know, we haven't had a service like Uber or Lyft, internet service, come into the city, so that isn't something that's directly addressed in this ordinance. From some of our experience and what we see in taxi drivers, they tend, our taxi companies tend to operate two or three vehicles, and to have two or three taxi cabs operating out of a personal garage where they're changing tires and doing all the other things that you have to do in a taxi cab business, it seemed at least to us to be more appropriate that that would occur in a commercial or an industrial zone rather than next to somebody's house.
But we could address that down the road if, say, Uber or Lyft, or, you know, we grow to that where they would want to provide, we could address that as an amendment or...
Certainly, the ordinance can be amended at any time that the commission feels appropriate.
And then my third question is, how directly does this affect, like the buses in town, those party buses and stuff like that?
The buses are regulated under a different section. Farther down your ordinance, there is a particular section, I think it's 3612, that addresses buses. There isn't a whole lot of change made to regulation of buses. They would still be required to provide the evidence of insurance and driver's licenses and those sorts of things. There are some additional requirements with respect to allowing police officers to enter into a party bus at any time. We have, I had some complaints about that, about, say, underage minors drinking on the party bus, or some suggestions of that at least, so that is intended to address that particular issue in this ordinance.
I guess I did have one more question. It does say in here that the city administrator will set the limit of where they can drive. How are we going, I mean, how are we going to determine that?
I'm not, I don't recall the specific section that you're referring to.
3616, yeah, I mean, 060. In granting the license, the city administrator shall designate the territory and streets upon which the bus or on the bus shall be entitled to operate.
For that section pertaining to the bus routes, and that is a holdover of what's in existing code now, that's not something that has changed, but I think that's a good thing that we may need to revisit and see whether that actually makes sense to have that in city code.
Designate territories.
Well, good comments and questions, Commissioner Decker. Are there any other comments or questions?
Mr. President, just a couple of comments here. Anyone that provides a ride and they're counting on their personal insurance for protection when they're giving a ride, when they take money, that nullifies any coverage on their personal automobile policy. I know we had one individual that submitted a copy of his personal one. That's not good. Second, in my experience, it's tough to find an insurance company that'll take anyone under the age of 21.
Thank you for those comments.
Mr. President, I guess one other thing that I was going to mention and forgot, there is no specific regulation of fares or prices that the city would impose pursuant to this ordinance. It would allow taxi companies, taxi drivers to set their own fares, but they would be required to provide the city a copy of their fare sheet so that in the event that a customer submitted a complaint that they had been overcharged, we would have a list of what that company's fares would be and would be able to address that in that manner. There are some cities that do regulate fares and mandate a uniform system of taxi fares citywide. At least in this ordinance, we've elected not to do that, but that is an option that would be open to you as well.
Okay. Any other comments here by commissioners? Now, Mr. Kessel, you said that you either have another meeting scheduled or you are going to schedule one.
That's correct.
And is that with the industry? Is that...
That's exactly correct, President Johnson. I've had two points of communication today with industry representatives that would like to further revise this document. That'll take place before the next, well, we hope it to take place before the next city commission meeting so that we can provide you first reading.
Okay. And again, for anyone who came in late, we'll take public comment on this at the end of the meeting, but also to remind you that each ordinance goes through two readings. So first reading, you have an opportunity to comment, and then with an ordinance with this much change, we'll also do a public hearing at the meeting following the first reading. So if it passes first reading, there'll be a public hearing. There wouldn't be any action taken then, but we would hear all comments. Then there'd be a third meeting where second reading would be presented, and at that time there's, again, an opportunity for public comment, and at that time, the commission would likely take action. While during that process, that ordinance can continue to be, changes can be made to it. So the original language at first reading isn't necessarily the language you end up with second and final reading. So with that, and then we'd go to your next item, which is downtown parking.
Mr. President?
Oh, Mr. Jackson?
Could I just ask on this, as you get each draft, the ordinance changed, could you send us a copy even before the agenda comes out so we can take a look at it? Send us something via email, something electronically, so we can take a look? At least I would like it.
I think that's a good idea. It's a long ordinance, and it's a lot easier to read if we can print it out as opposed to read electronically, at least I know for an older guy it is, so...
Mr. President, I'd just note, too, that the draft ordinance is a public document. It's public record, and anybody, any interested citizen that wants a copy of the ordinance is free to obtain one from anyone at city hall.
Thank you, Mr. Coleen.
The next item, then, is another discussion related to potential ordinance revisions. I'll make just a couple introductory remarks. This ordinance has actually come up several different times at what I'll call executive team meetings. It allows for designations of parking related to staff members that are employed in the downtown area. It is essentially unenforceable. Police Chief Dossinger has made that comment several times, that the only way to really enforce this type of an ordinance would be to have the ability to know what every employee drives, what their vehicles are. So it's very, very cumbersome to try and enforce it. It's basically been done on a complaint basis, and so what we're proposing to you is revisions that would essentially nullify that portion of the ordinance. And I'll turn over the details to Attorney Coleen and if Chief Dossinger has any further comments. comments.
Mr. President, Commissioners, just very briefly, this does propose the repeal or the elimination of this section of the code. We have had difficulties when this violation is cited, getting convictions or getting the court to entertain those tickets just because of the fact that it's tough to have notice, at least as the court sees it, tough to have notice of where employees are going to park, and tough for police department to know which vehicles are entitled to be parked in which areas. Chief Dossinger may wish to provide some more detail, but I guess that's all I have for this one.
So Chief Dossinger, did you want to comment?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. I believe City Administrator Kessel and City Attorney Kohling summed it up nicely for us. I think oftentimes the Dickinson Police Department does address these issues at a complaint-driven basis. It's very difficult to know who's exactly employed in the downtown district, what vehicles they drive. If we do know that, are they actually working, or are they actually downtown shopping? So it's very hit and miss enforcing this ordinance and very difficult to do.
Thank you, Chief. Any feedback for the staff here regarding this ordinance, proposed one?
Just a question. I can understand the enforcement side of it very easily. Have we involved the Downtown Association in this discussion?
I can't answer that. I know that I have not had discussions with the Downtown Association. Mr. Josephson is our contact with them. Has this item come up?
Just, yes, Steve Josephson, City/County Planner. Just very briefly, I did call, I did call Kristi Schwartz last week, and while she couldn't be here, she was going to ask if there were other members of the Downtown Association who could come tonight, and I don't know, is there anyone here from the Downtown Association?
Yes.
Okay, so we have one person who's here.
And I don't want to bring it up, you know, we're talking about just eliminating the ordinance. I don't know what it would be, but maybe there is an alternative.
Commissioner Jackson, the Downtown Association does have a proposal with regard to downtown parking. It's rather comprehensive. They are submitting some details for us to review. This item in particular was not raised as an issue in that submission, but they, this is obviously something that they are very in tuned with. I'm not sure if Mr. Remark has any comments.
Well, he can make them at the end of the meeting, just like the taxi people, too. Okay? It's just here for reports, and this is going to go through, you know, I suspect a similar process where we'll have a public hearing in between first and second reading, so we, I think we would hope that, you know, you would meet with the downtown folks, too, you know, really before you bring this to us for first reading.
Okay. Any other?
Well, we'll take comments at the end of the meeting on this, too, so.
The next two items then are, I think, you know, that we receive, we get these on occasion. This one is particularly related to the Prairie Senior Citizen Center. They received grant dollars that was recently appropriated. It's located in Amadon, and they were expressing their thanks. Southwest Water provides their operational report every year, and that document is provided to you. I do have some introductions that I'd like to make tonight. We have two staff and another contracted employee that are going to figure in to future meetings that I think you should be aware of. The first introduction that I'd like to make is to Deputy City Administrator Doug Valesky. Mr. Valesky comes to us from the state of Montana, specifically Helena, Montana, where he has been a state employee for the past 30 years. He is their, or was their CFO in their information technology department. We are very excited to have Mr. Valesky aboard, and as we have introduced him to others, he's finding more and more family in the area. So I'm not sure if you want to make any comments, Mr. Valesky?
Mr. President, Commissioners, just wanted to say thank you for giving me this opportunity, and I'm really excited to be here. I'm finding, I've been here, this is my sixth day, and everybody's been great to work with, and I think this is going to be a real challenge, but I'm excited to be here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome.
The next introduction that I'd like to make is Planning Director Walter Hadley. Mr. Hadley joins us most recently from McKenzie County, where he's been the planning director there for about three years. Prior to that, he was in Kellogg, Idaho for 20-plus years. So he comes to us with a great deal of experience. He has Mr. Valesky beat because today is his first day. He is in the audience, and if you'd like to make any introductory remarks, please do so.
President Johnson, commission members, thank you for the opportunity. First day on the job, I've got to know most people in the building, at least a hello. I am impressed with the professionalism and your organization and the folks you have working here, and I look forward to the opportunity. I'm excited about Dickinson and the future here.
Welcome to you also.
Thank you.
We're excited to have both of you here. We've been looking for a long time, so.
Thank you.
And the last introduction that I'd like to make is Christina Winko. Christina will be replacing Mr. Kohling, at least for the interim, as we seek another in-house counsel. Ms. Winko is employed by McAuliffe Kellogg, and she has had about three or four different meetings already trying to orientate her to all of the details that happen in the city of Dickinson and the legal aspects. So Ms. Winko?
Just want to reiterate, I'm very excited to be a part of this. We're getting used to how things operate and the policies and procedures within the city. I am also in the same boat with a fairly few other people here, so getting to know everyone and get accustomed to how things operate. And I have some very big shoes to fill, so we're going to hope that we can get that done and taken care of, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Ms. Winko, welcome to you also.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. Well, then we're going, there's nothing to report on for public safety. We'll go to engineering, and the first item there has to do with MDU and Rough Rider Electric. And Mr. Jackson, you will have to chair this item. I do have a conflict, so I'm done. You're in charge.
You're done. Well, I hope Mr. Kohling isn't. Go ahead, Mr. Kohling.
Thank you, Commissioners. The resolution in front of you is a resolution amending the franchise agreements with MDU and Rough Rider Electric and accepting a service area adjustment that the two electric service providers have agreed to. I'd like to thank Rough Rider Electric and MDU for meeting on this. I know it was a difficult decision and a difficult negotiation between them to divide their service areas, but as it is in our franchise agreements, since we have two electric service providers and we don't want to duplicate services unnecessarily, each franchisee has a franchise only within their designated area. And with the annexations that the city has taken on in the past few years, the distribution of their service areas needed to be adjusted in order to incorporate some newly annexed areas and some areas that we anticipate annexing in the not-too-distant future. So included in your packet is a map that designates each respective service area for MDU and Rough Rider Electric. City staff would recommend approval of this resolution, which would amend the service franchise agreements and accept the map as proposed. This would be Resolution 20-2015. Mr. Vice President.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Kohling concerning this resolution? I assume, Mr. Kohling, that if the two utility companies felt that a revision was needed in the future, that would be a simple matter for us to accommodate those wishes?
Yes, Mr. Jackson, the way the service area agreement is written, it's up to the two franchisees to meet and to negotiate any adjustment in their service areas. So in the event that additional areas would be annexed to the city or additional franchise rights needed to be granted, we would look to both Rough Rider and MDU to adjust that map pursuant to an agreement.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or any comments by city commissioners?
I would make a motion to approve the resolution.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, we will vote. Mr. Oltmans?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. We'll go to Item B there and then, which is Highway 22 landscaping, construction, administration services, and City Engineer Kubus will further comment on this item.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. The city has awarded this Highway 22 landscaping project to Snortum's Nursery for the tree plantings along Highway 22 in North Dickinson. This agreement would engage Altech engineers to perform the contract administration. Altech engineers provided the design services for the project. This project does involve DOT funding. The city had received a transportation enhancement grant for this landscaping project. So with that DOT and federal funding involvement, the level of inspection and record keepings are greater than an average city project. The planting is scheduled for this May, and city staff recommends approval of this agreement. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kubus. Are there any comments or questions for you?
I gather, from looking at the agreement, that we must have contemplated doing this ourselves at one time.
We had, we had. You know, this project was bid in the fall of 2013. At that time, we were planning on doing the contract administration. We rejected those bids, rebid it in the fall of '14 with some turnover, felt it would be best to engage a consultant to do this.
Any other comments, questions? Is there a motion regarding this contract?
I'll move we approve the contract.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing now will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Oltman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. So do you have a report?
We do have some reports. A lot of construction starting up here, some carryover work from last year that's been ongoing for better than a month now, and some of our new projects starting off. But to give those updates, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Engineer Marshick.
Good evening, President Johnson and Commissioners. I have a brief PowerPoint that I'm just going to give you an overview of some of our street closures. The first one I want to touch on is the 15th Street West street closure. We were waiting for the bituminous plant to open up, so it's our hope that they'll be able to get this paved this week. There'll still be construction going on south of 15th where the lift station's being constructed, but we don't expect any further traffic disruptions in that area.
And Ms. Marshick, how long do you, how long are we thinking? This piece of 15th?
Let me back up here. The closure they put in for is for this week.
Just for this week?
Yep. So I'm hoping we'll be able to stick with that. The next one I want to talk about is the west side of South Main on Broadway. We have some underground construction that's going on in that location as part of our 24-inch East Waterline. They'll have to do some closure on the turn lane to get that underground in. They're doing some boring under Main also. So that I don't have a good timeline for, but their understanding is to get it done as soon as they can get it done and get that back open in that area. On Broadway, this will continue to work its way east, is my understanding. That's their attempt. So we'll move to the east side of South Main and have this area closed, and we're hoping to get that reopened by mid-June. We also have this area of Broadway that we anticipate to have some closure on. We came across the ASBILs for this, when the project was designed showed the water main, the existing water main in one location, and when we got into this area, it actually is off by 20-some feet, and it's right in the location where we designed to put our 24-inch. So we're having to do some redesign in this area, and once we get that taken care of and they get in here, we will see this location closed for a period of time. But I don't have those dates for you today. Again, this is part of our 24-inch East Watermain project. Another closure is the State Avenue project on the northeast part of town by our Public Safety Center. We have that worked out with the contractor to make sure that there is access to the Public Safety Center in time for them to open. So there's a lot of coordination going on there. Maybe see the note here that we're having some discussion about actually closing that intersection. I'll go to the next slide here. We're looking at the possibility of closing the intersection of 21st and State, in addition to that, closing the section of 21st Street to allow them to get their construction done in a quicker timeframe. That closure would only go to 30th Avenue. West of 30th, we have our water tower that we're constructing. We want to maintain that access. If we do have this closure at State and 21st, the picture on the right, you can see the little orange line, we'll be having a bypass put in, so you'd still be able to have the movements from south to east and east to south. So those legs would be open. We'll still be able to continue to move that way. But it would allow us to get that taken care of in a shorter timeframe and hopefully open that intersection in a much shorter time. So that is some discussion that we're having right now. The last one I have here is for the 40th Street. I know we're all anxious for them to be working on this piece. One thing that we do want to mention is there's some casing going under 22, so we'll see a little bit of traffic interruption west of 22 on 40th as they get their bore pit put in, and hopefully we will get this wrapped up this year and have a really nice new urban section. I just wanted to touch base, for those of you who maybe aren't familiar with this, our city Facebook and Twitter, and then we have a construction website where a lot of these closures and the maps are posted, and so people can go to www.successisalwaysunderconstruction.com and find similar notifications to this, and we're also posting those on Twitter and Facebook. Any additional questions for me?
It's going to be a busy and trying construction season.
We ask for everyone's patience, and when we get through, it's going to be so much nicer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Kubus, that you'd want to add?
Just to expound on Ms. Marshick's report, you know, these would be fairly significant closures. We are negotiating right now with multiple contractors, it's not all one contract, of course, on some deducts for this work, and like she had mentioned, shortening up the timeframe because we feel that there's just the benefit of getting in, getting out, and getting it open, free, and clear to the public. So we're hashing out those details as we speak right now. And of course, all the accesses that we have to maintain for emergency services to the residences that are on those streets, there will be access maintained to all the residences. It's not that we're shutting this down and you have to park your vehicle out on a side street or anything like that. So it'll just generally shut these streets... So it'll just generally shut these streets down to through traffic.
Thank you, Mr. Kubus, any comments or questions for him? All right, well then, we'll move to Public Works, and Mr. Zurov has at least one item there. It's a task order, and I'll let you introduce that.
Thank you, President Johnson and Commissioner. I have one item for your consideration, a task order. Do you have? This task order is for the Design and Construction Services for over 2,000 feet of roadway curb gutter and sidewalk reconstruction of 9th Street East, east of 10th Avenue East. The funding and priority of this project has not been determined but continued, I should say, quick deterioration of this street has prompted the need to begin design. This is a Level 1 road and a major east-west through street, and staff recommends approval.
Yeah, what's the estimate cost of the task order?
The task order itself?
The engineering part of it?
The total cost is, total task order amount including construction services is $267,77.
Any other questions or comments? So I take it what you're doing is getting the engineering done on this in the event that you can find either oil impact money or street fund money to do this construction?
Correct, President Johnson, the traffic engineer, the street engineer and the transportation engineer and the geotech and myself and the street manager did walk this street. We were hoping that we could do some surface work to hold this street, but the lack of base and the deterioration of the whole area, we feel we need quite a bit more than just a surface treatment on this, and it was his recommendation to look at a reconstruction. If there's any way we can, once we start design and do some more geotech, if there's any way we can cut costs or reduce the amount of this project, we sure will look into that. But just the age of the asphalt and the lack of base in that area, I felt it was the need to start at least design on that street.
Do we have a sense of what the reconstruction cost would likely be?
Estimates vary from about $1.7 to $1.9 million.
Other questions? Now, is there a motion regarding this task order?
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? Mr. Kessel, do you have a plan on how you're going to fund the $258,000?
We've had several projects that have come in under bid, so we should have ample opportunity for those amounts to be reallocated to this engineering cost.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to, excuse me, Mr. President, I would like to remind you two that we do have our Millen overlay project out currently for bid. If these dollars are projected to come out of the Street Projects Fund, we can sure adjust those numbers accordingly.
Any other comments? See, who moved this motion again?
I did.
Mr. Steiner, thank you. There's no other discussion, then we'll vote, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Anything else from Public Works?
I guess just a quick update, the city auction this weekend was a wonderful event. There was lots of people, the city with the different departments and the police, the things that were in the auction went, everything went, you know, went well. So I just wanted to tell the commission about that. Also, talking with our solid waste manager and street department, we really want to appreciate all the individuals and companies that are out picking up garbage. The amount of bags collected, I can't tell you yet, but I know it's lots of trucks of garbage that have already been picked up. And I was also told to say that the cleanup ends May 16th. Friday was the first day, but it continues to, and I think the city's starting to shape up considerably.
Thank you, Mr. Zurov. Any questions for the Public Works Director? All right, we'll move to Tab 8, Planning, and there's a final plat, and Mr. Millstone's going to introduce that item.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commission members, this is my last activity for tonight. This is a request for the final plat for the Rolling Hills subdivision. The site is generally located in the east half of the southwest quarter of Section 9, Township 139 North, Range 96 West, and comprises approximately 31 acres. This would be the northwest corner of the intersection of 8th Street Southwest and State Avenue. Planning and zoning commission and city staff recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Millstone, are there comments or questions for him?
I'll move that we approve Resolution 21, 2015.
Second.
Is that the right number? Okay. We have the motion to approve Resolution 21 in the second, is there any discussion? Hearing done, we'll go ahead and vote, Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Think there's no building reports? So any reports by commissioners? There's no reports by commissioners, so now's the public. And the taxi people have been waiting patiently, so we would start with them first. If there's anybody from the public that would like to talk about the taxi issue, come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments.
Hi, my name's Robert Shild, hello everyone. Hello. I'd like to say, I was listening to everyone speak about it, and you know, I have a daughter, and I was thinking about her safety, not with just taxi drivers, but what about delivery drivers? You know, people that are going to go to your home, FedEx people, UPS people, Pizza Hut. I mean, maybe y'all, I'm not no politician or nothing, but maybe y'all could like, maybe think about that a little bit.
All right, thank you.
God bless.
Anybody else?
Hello, President Johnson and City Commissioners. I'd like to make comments on the taxi and the bus issue as far as the having shops and stuff where they have to work at. It would be an initial cost to each one right now, and it would probably drive the businesses out of the city at this moment. If there would be some way they could do it over a period of time or something like that, that would be a better situation than all of a sudden in two months say, hey, you got to have a shop to work on your vehicles and to store them, and you can't work out of your house because, you know, you'd have to build an office and other things. And the other thing is, I was, what was the other thing? Oh, on the licensing and stuff, you know, that is fine, but as far as the city to have a license on each one of them, do a background check on the owners, and then the responsibility of the employees from there should fall upon the owners of the business to do background checks on their own employees.
Okay. Could you just, for the record, tell the clerk your name?
My name's Marvin Dill.
Thank you, Mr. Dill. Anybody else wish to comment?
I never have anything valuable to say. Hi, my name's Megan Patrick, and I am one of the owners of Dickinson Yellow Cab and E-Cab Global Transit Services. I would like to say thank you to all of you for looking at a taxi regulation. Being on the ground in Dickinson as an owner-operator for the last three years, we have seen a number of very strange, unruly incidents. I actually, I know you said we're going to have a meeting later. There are a couple of things I'd like to add to this and absolutely nothing I'd like to take out. You did an excellent job, very well done for a first ordinance, but I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time to actually deal with us, because I know we're a pain. And the bigger we get, the more of a pain we become. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for being here.
President Johnson, Councilmembers, thank you. I agree with some of my cohorts here, and I do agree we definitely need regulation. I'm a lifetime resident of North Dakota. My wife is a lifetime resident and resident of Dickinson, North Dakota, has worked here her whole life. We have, I haven't given any of my recommendations or sites and what's going on. I haven't been part of the other groups. I'm here to offer that, and in the future, down the road, different ideas we have. We started in 2011, I believe, business here in town along, excuse me, with public transit. I love public transit, I think they do a wonderful job in this town, and I don't think we should have to compete with them or they with us. I recommend them highly. However, some of the comments that were made earlier was, I agree with one of the gentlemen that spoke on having a building of our own in this town. I think all of you, and I've seen it in the commission meetings over the years, have seen that public transit probably would not have made it without the help of you commissioners and their bunnies that they've been given over the years, and we need them, we need them badly. Same is with us. I operate out of my home, but I support the businesses in this town to do the labor on my vehicles. Spend a lot of money with them, insurance, same thing. Insurance for cabs in this town is very expensive, and those of us who operate two or three cabs, we can't compete with New York City type cab, that kind of thing. So I have other ideas, I agree with a lot of the ideas, but thank you for letting us, give us a little bit more opportunity to put our two cents in and make this work for everybody.
Thank you, but can you tell the clerk your name also?
Steve Olufsen.
Thank you.
I own E-Cab.
All right, thank you.
Gentlemen, ladies. Michael Skirpay, Operations Manager for E-Cab and Dickinson Yellow Cab. I guess first of all, again, thank you for considering the idea of regulations. We have a problem, and along with that problem, we would like to make sure that we have the opportunity to address the addendums and make changes that are more appropriate for Dickinson. The schedule that was given, the proposal, is a little extreme on a few things, definitely. So thank you for your time, and we'll look forward to the next meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to talk about the proposed taxi ordinance? Okay, and Mr. Kessel, how will you go about letting people know when your next meeting's going to be?
I've held a meeting already with at least three of the people present in the audience. The fourth one I've had the conversation with today, Ms. Binstock is going to be scheduling that meeting, and so if all of you could make sure you provide your phone numbers to her and/or email addresses, we'll broadcast that invitation to you all. Thank you.
All right, at this time, if there, if someone has any other issues they'd like to talk to the commission about, you can just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments.
Hi, my name's Robert Shild, nice to talk to you all again. I have a, I have a bunch of stuff to say. Some of it my lawyers say I can't say right now at this time, but the things I can talk about are like, okay, like the billboard near Walmart, the wanted poster on there. I think something like that should be more directed towards an adult setting, just in case, like I said, I have a daughter. Just in case kids that are in foster care or family members don't feel a sense of disgrace by seeing one of their loved ones 50 feet up in the air or wanted. I mean, I've been talking to a bunch of people about this. They said that on the police station's Facebook, that they don't really see that on there. You know, I was thinking with that free advertisement, as I talked to you a little bit about, perhaps promote, glorify the city's greatness, not its heartaches. I'm not saying run away from its heartaches, but I mean, you got the rec center, you got the frisbee golf. You guys got, you guys really got going on in this town, you know? It's good to have a guard dog in a house, right? But when you're trying to rent a room to someone, if the guard dog's biting at the guest, the guests aren't going to want to rent that room. And the oil boom's slowing down, so I really think we need as many good people as we can get. And I also like to comment on the panhandling. Well, I've had a panhandle last year, actually on my birthday, and the judges will testify to this. A guy got charged with terrorizing, I got beat for 15 minutes with a baseball bat at 3:00 in the afternoon at the apartment complex John Koslecki owns on 14th Street. I could barely walk for two and a half months, I have no family. The only family I really have is my daughter I'm allowed to see, and I see her at Family Connections. Well, I'm not going to leave this town. I would freeze to death and die before I'd abandon her. She's been through terrible sexual abuse. State's attorney threw all that out because the bodily fluids evidence got damaged when she was five, and the people that did it live right across from a school in Bellfield. It's a horrifying situation. Well, she's in good hands now, she went through her foster care, she had some teachers that foster parents, and she's top of her class. I have 66 days clean off methamphetamines, I have 50 days clean off weed. My mind, I tell you the truth, this talking to you all is the best rush I've had in a long time, and it's scary. It's like jumping off a diving bar for the first time. And I, I'm trying to help the community, I love all of you. You guys saved my life when there was no facility, no nothing to save me, and this family took me in about two months ago, and they showed me love, and they made me realize I'm not just a dog, none of us are, we're all people. And not to settle for being put down like a dog, just stick up for yourself. And the court system, everyone's starting to see that, I realize I'm not a dog. I mean, I was held last week illegally. Three judges signed that I should not be in jail, and the sheriff said they didn't care about that. Those are some of the issues I'm not allowed to talk to you about right now. But yeah, with the panhandling thing, I think it would be a good idea on places where people panhandle to post that if you are panhandling, you will be subject to search and seizure. Why? Because some of them are severe drug addicts. And some of them are just trying to take advantage of people. I feel if someone has more than $150 in their pocket, and that's on them when they're panhandling, they should be in trouble, you know what I'm saying? Because that's just taking advantage of a lot of good people. $150 is enough to get a motel room, it's enough to get food, maybe a phone to get a job. You know, those are the things I was always going for. And sometimes I still do it once in a while, I get someone diapers, I get someone formula. I won't go to give it to them, they'll come to my job. I work at a fast food place and help pick up diapers and stuff. This one lady I work with at this pizza place, she actually Facebooked me, and she said, you're an amazing person. I wish I was smart enough to get to know you earlier. I do appreciate what this town's done for me. I am making a public apology to Sean Kessel. I'm not going to glorify the person that had me do it, but I put all these Stop Kessel Life stickers everywhere. This person lied to me about the guy, this guy is an amazing gentleman. This guy is an amazing gentleman. He loves his job, he loves the people, he cares about the children of this community. And with that, I'll end with, God bless you all.
Okay, thank you for being here. Anybody else like to address the commission?
Yes, I would, thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, my name is Mary Jane Ermentraut. My husband Doug and I live at 2691 Sundance Drive, and that's right below the radar base hill. We were annexed into the city limits in August of 2012. We did not know about it until January of 2014. And then in April of 2015, we received a letter from the city assessor's office letting us know that the value of our home had increased from $163,300 to $227,900. That's an increase of $64,600, which also means that my taxes will probably go up about $700 a year. We have less than an acre of land, and that land value increased from $13,000 to $33,000. Now, this is where our problem lies, because that, that area that we live in, there used to be homes for the radar base people that worked there. And when the base closed, the homes were sold and moved off the property, and what was left evidently was just buried, because whenever we do anything, we find garbage down there. We have found huge concrete blocks, cement blocks. We found a propane holding tank buried in our yard. It's just a, it's a mess. We also are on a very high water table. The, my husband tore the corral apart, and when he pulled out the fence post, he looked down in the hole, and there was water down there. So because of this water table, we have a problem with the drain field. And we're very careful with the water use each that we have, that we use. In fact, I have done laundry in town for 35 years. And that's no fun, excuse me. So we, I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. I've done laundry in town for 35 years. So we have this high water table, and we have a drain field that we have to think about putting in. Well, now that we're annexed into the city, I called the city engineer, Mr. Coobis, and I asked when water in sewer would be put into our area. And he said it's not on the timetable at this time, well, it's not on the table at this time, but it depends on the developer. Now, the developer is a man who is working on Sundance Cove, and he's going to be putting in Sundance Village, which is just south of us. And the land belongs to Mr. Frenzel. My husband contacted Les Frenzel, and Les has not sold that land yet. And he talked to the developer, but he said he's not going to buy it now because he's got other things he has to take care of and doesn't know when that's going to be developed. So if getting sewer in our area depends on the developer, excuse me, that means it's going to be a while. So here we are with an increase in taxes, no city water, no city sewer, dirt street in front of my home, and I still have to do laundry in town. So I wonder if you would consider leaving the value alone, of my home alone as what it was, and not increase the taxes until the time that city sewer and water does get put into that area. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. We, we've already adjourned as a board of equalization when we could address the value. Well, Mr. Hirschfield, have, have you met with this family?
He's the one who told me to come to the meeting.
Mr. Hirschfield.
Mr. President, commissioners, I have not firmly sat down across the table from them or met them before today, but have spoke to them several times. I've also had my appraiser out there. We went over their valuation in depth, and the reason for the increase being they're recently annexed and had a, an old county valuation on that. We did bring that up, and in my opinion, we were very conservative with that value estimate due to some of the issues that they have there, and so we were, what I still believe is undermarket. And the reason I suggested she come speak to you here was her concern about not getting the services that she said that they were promised several years ago.
Okay. But you, you, someone from your staff has been out to the property and?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're, as a city, we're familiar with it?
Yes, very familiar, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Ermentraut?
Yes.
Quick question. Has, has any property been sold or bought out there in the last three years?
Yes, there has. The house across the street from us has been sold about, I want to say, four times in the last four years because they have a water problem also. And they, they get about $300,000.
Mr. Hirschfield, have, have we done comparables with, with those homes?
Commissioner Steiner, Mr. President, we, we have. I mean, she talked about the value, the land value being, excuse me, $33,000. Similar one acre lot sites, if you go throughout town, if you look at Maryville subdivision, Rochas, Craila Check, some of the other similar deckers of subdivision on the south side, you'll see one acre sites sell from, oh, $50,000 up near to a, to $100,000. So we felt, you know, we were being responsible with the value that we had on this with the issues. And similarly with the property, I mean, we're not pushing the values up there. We recognize that they hadn't had a change in value in three years, and then probably were a little undervalued coming from the county at that. So they had a significant increase over what they're used to, but I still believe we're fair, you know, even a little conservative with what we've done up there in that, that Sundance Village, or Sundance Village, but Sundance Estates there.
You took into account the debris that she mentioned that left over from, I guess, the radar site?
Yes. I mean, that, the, the site was taken into consideration. There was a recent sale up there. I think it was 294,000 is what it was, but close to, to the 300.
But you didn't know that there was rubble underneath until we talked.
Until you spoke to us, yes.
Right, right. And you had already set the valuation?
Well, we're, yes.
Well, it sounds, we have two issues. One is whether or not the, the value is a fair and equitable value. But along with that, we've already adjourned as the board of equalization, so I imagine that could be brought to the county, and the county might take into consideration your extenuating circumstances and adjust our valuation. And maybe Mr. Hirschfield could help explain to you what your next step is there. The second issue is the one of city water and sewer, and I think we'd probably need a presentation or have some material prepared by a city engineer, you know, show us where water and sewer is in relationship to, to their property.
We could sure put that together with a, a map just showing where we're at, projects that are on our, our capital improvement list that would move water and/or sewer closer to the, to the property that Mrs. Ermentraut's speaking of, just to, to show relative proximity and what it would take in, in rough dollars to, to get water and sewer out there.
Well, I think we'd need to see that, so.
Mr. President, just clarification. Sundance Coves, is that on the south?
That's south of us.
Right. And then Sundance Village is?
Is directly south of us, will be directly south of us.
Right.
Sundance Coves is around the curve going up to our.
Exactly. And, and you're saying that the, the property or the land that the village is supposed to go, is, has not been sold?
No, it has not been sold. Doug called Lester Frenzel a week ago, and Les had just met with the man and said that he wants to buy it, but he's got other things he's got to take care of, and he doesn't know when that'll happen, so Les still owns it.
But there's been a sign that says?
Oh, yeah. There's been a sign there for years, for, not years, I beg your pardon, for a long time.
I've always assumed that was sold.
We'd be very happy to pay our taxes as they are if we had city sewer.
We wouldn't complain about nothing.
Our ha, our house would be worth that. It's not worth that. You can't put a drain field in there that works. We know.
Well, it sounds to me like there is some extenuating circumstances. I, I don't know that the city can do anything more unless you have a, a solution, Mr. Coling.
Mr. President, I think you're right that since the city board of equalization is adjourned, I think it is a matter that should be brought to the county board of equalization to, to determine. There may be a, a possibility of a tax abatement, but I'd, I'd leave it to, to Mr. Hirschfield to pursue that process if that would be something that?
You know, I, I think if, if we miss some of the extenuating circumstances, I think it would behoove the city to write a letter of support to the county board of equalization and ask for their consideration to perhaps revalue that property. And, you know, I think the water table issue and the debris issue could be considerations. What are the rest of you think?
Yeah, I would hope that we could do a letter or a memo. This came in, you know, very late into our meeting. When we had the meeting earlier today, we'd received kind of a late email addition that we were able to act on, so it shouldn't be any different for the county to act on. I meant for me.
Well, I, I think, especially if the city would support a lower valuation. I mean, here, here again, even though they're in city limits, as they point out, they don't have city water and sewer. They deal with a high water table issue, and there's some debris from a prior development, let's just say it that way, that perhaps would make the land a little less value. And with, right now, big unknown whether or not the, their adjacent developer is going to proceed or whether or not they're going to proceed in a timely fashion. I think those are all considerations.
No, Mr. President, they certainly are, and they were all considered prior to us, you know, even after the valuation. We may not have known to the amount of rubble, but through a physical inspection, maybe that certain item wasn't taken into consideration, but there were certainly similar items that were taken into consideration that would affect it in a manner that we had already adjusted for, so there wasn't any further room to be made. We'd accounted for a similar type obsolescence, if you will.
I think we would like you to review it once again, and if, if you can see your way to making any adjustments to support them, you know, again at that county board, you know?
I certainly will, Mr. President, commissioners.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. We'd still like to see, you know, so, how far away we are there and what that could end up costing if, if we brought water and sewer up there. Other issues? Anybody else? No, if there's no one else, then the chair to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Motion carries.